All right, we'll go ahead and open this committee at the all meeting. Copy of the open meetings act is posted. Madam Clerk, will you take roll call please?
Alarcon here.
Barr.
Here.
Heimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Belinski.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Council President Jablonsky, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Have one item on the agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, who's going to speak today?
Are your, is your mic on?
I go.
You got it, okay.
Can you hear me now?
We got you.
All right. So, thanks for having us here today, BBH Architecture again. Mark Bacon, have my colleague here Cynthia Ray, who's worked on the project as well. So, it's been a real pleasure of ours to continue our work with the city of Columbus and Rick and Betsy and Braden on this, on this effort. So, we're going to give a high level overview of the progress to date on the Memorial Stadium project. And these are the topics that we'll cover. And if, if at any point you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. So, it's been a comprehensive project. We're nearly wrapping up the schematic design phase. And we do have, you know, a little bit of work to put a bow on that, but that should be turned over at the very beginning of January and then waiting all on direction from, from the city on how to proceed. So, first and foremost, we, we started with community engagement to really listen to what the needs of the community were and are. That included meeting with both high schools, having different events out in the community, town hall meetings. We had an online survey with really good participation and also a survey at Columbus Days as well as a booth. And so, I would say that we got good participation, good activity within the community engagement. And I feel like we got a pretty good pulse on what the needs of the community are for the Memorial Stadium. And so, as I jump right into more of the, the logistics of this, I just want to remind everybody like the, the boundary here shown in red was really what we were tasked with defining. So, that was our scope of work extent and really looking at the stadium, the parking lot, and then, you know, the, the abutting facility to the tennis court area. You guys have all been there, you know what it, it looks like and, you know, the condition of the different facilities, primarily the Memorial Stadium, the different historical aspects of it from, you know, the plaque, the plaque to the gateway entry and all of, all of the services that are provided at the park. There has been issues obviously with the, the addition to the stadium having, you know, leaking quite a bit and just not being able to expand or provide the, the newest amenities for, you know, for the, the city and its multitude of uses. So, this addition looks to remedy that and be able to provide, you know, clear but flexible arrangements for either track, football, or other city events like a, a marathon, for instance. And so, again, this, this site aerial is the proposed changes to the, to the stadium and its grounds. It's still oriented the same, so you see the football stadium at the bottom, or the football field at the bottom of the, the page here. We were able to reorient the main drive to bring more parking between the, the drive and the, the stadium itself, which allowed us to expand the drop off area as a protected area. We now have, you know, structured parking or marked parking of 130 to 140 stalls where, you know, currently it's just a gravel lot and kind of a free for all. So, that gives the ability to have, you know, clear parking. There's footpaths and better connectivity between, you know, not only the stadium, the tennis court and over to the aquatic center as well. And then also the access to the Burger Bash and the stadium plaza, which, you know, the Burger Bash not only is used for, you know, game days, but also like the marathon and, and becomes a staging area, you know, check in, check out that. And so, it's been conceptualized as a really flexible area, but the Burger Bash being, you know, primarily for those game day events. So, we'll jump right into the floor plan here. You'll, you'll see a, a dash line that denotes where everything below that is actually where the historic stadium is. And then everything above that would be the new addition, whether it was the previous addition or what we're proposing now. So, that's just a good reference point. So, the first thing that you see showed up there was the Burger Bash area. That allows about, I think, 150 people to, with picnic tables to be able to, you know, have a meal there. It does have a trash enclosure and those, those elements as well. And then you can start to see as the, the parking and the plaza area to really create a generous welcoming into the stadium, but also, you know, the plaza space acts as a, an event space, you know, for pre and post game as well. If you do, you know, like the, the team walks in, those, those aspects of this. So, really trying to create that game day atmosphere. Can see now where the, the new addition has really expanded the stadium to provide not only a modern facility for spectators, but also spectators and fans, but also for the athletes, whether they're, you know, track athletes or football athletes and prioritizing that game day experience, you know? So, yeah, Ron.
Team buses, where, where are they to be located?
Team buses, they, they're able to drop off on this main drive and then you're able to walk right in here. And then the buses are able to pull out of the way and, and park, so they're not obstructing the, the, the main road. We talked about, you know, the bus and team drop off often happens well before fans start arriving, so there shouldn't be any of that congestion there too. So, good question. Lots of ADA parking that's close to the stadium as well, and you can see that denoted here in those hatched patterns. So, as we zoom in a little bit closer on this, again, you can still see the red line where the existing stadium has been maintained. Along that red line, we plan on, you know, restoring as much as possible the existing facade of the Columbus Stadium, so that as the spectators are moving, you know, to the restrooms and concessions and that game day experience, that's still present. Think of Memorial Stadium in, in Lincoln, right? Where the, the historic aspect is still present. And I think, you know, that was really important. Lots and lots of toilets and urinals to accommodate not only the game day experience, but then being able to section off a part of the, the men's and women's toilets to be accessible from the exterior, so that you would, you know, any event that's happening, you know, within the parking lot, if you're having a, a movie night or something in the parking lot, you would have access to those. But then, you know, there's able to, be able to have secure accessible control there, so it's not a free for all to the entire stadium. One of the things I wanted to, you know, talk about was how we've specifically zoned this building, so that you can really think about the spectator service zones. So, those are highlighted now, anywhere from the concessions restroom and the booster area and your vertical circulation to get to the upper concourse with the game day experience. So, when you, as soon as you come through that front gate, you're in a branded environment, depending on which high school is playing at the stadium at that time. There's the possibility having exhibits, branding, wall graphics, you know, digital displays, those types of things to, you know, promote the all state players, those aspects. And then ultimately, you go through the vomitorium out to the stadium seating and, and get the, the experience. So, again, shown really through here, this is the, you know, the pink arrows really talk about how the spectator is going to move, come in the front door, you've got the exhibit display right in front of you. Again, that can be static or dynamic. And then you, going off to the left or the right, there would be access to the restrooms. And again, walking along that existing stadium facade and then out to the, to the field itself. And then the, the locker rooms, whether it's football or track, are kind of nestled underneath the existing bleachers, the concrete bleachers, again, providing, you know, showers, restrooms, plenty of locker storage space. And then direct access to the field through, you know, overhead garage doors. You know, essentially, once you've got on your pads, you're pretty wide, so going, going through a normal door oftentimes makes it pretty tight. And so, that's one trick we've learned, just to be able to, you know, get the players out onto the field or into the locker room quicker, right? You want to maximize that, that halftime talk, so. Now, we're one level up on the upper concourse. This area covers most of the new addition and houses the press box, which will have, you know, the coaches both home and away, scoreboard, media and restrooms and those types of things, as well as a stair that will take you up to the crow's nest, where they'll be able to film, you know, be able to do your highlight reels from up there, those types of things. This upper concourse also allows for additional ADA seating, additional programming space. You could have, you know, you know, a pop up concessions up here. You could also eventually put additional seating, should the current seating that's there not be sufficient as Columbus continues to grow. There's lots of opportunities to, to be able to, again, make this flexible. And right now, this is conceptualized as having a canopy or an, a cover over this entire upper concourse area. Again, thinking about the, the western sun and being able to shade spectators as, as that's, you know, behind you. So, again, we've phased this all in such a way that, you know, we can option these in, these different options in based on funding that's available or, you know, as needs may arise with the city. So, as we're looking at that exterior design, again, looking from the west back to the east, you can see the, the new stadium and that canopy I was just discussing. The Burger Bash area is off to the right. And then the new stadium and its plaza is off to the left. And being able to, you know, have a nice, be able to, you know, leave your car, have protected crosswalks to get you to the stadium itself. And then there's actually a covered walkway kind of along that, that entire area to get you out of the elements and into the stadium. Again, from the end zone, kind of in between the end zone and the, the track, you can, looking back at the Burger Bash area, which still has a great view to the field, so you could watch the game from there as well or have a halftime show. But again, that covered canopy covers not only the crow's nest, but also that upper concourse area. Getting a little bit closer to the Burger Bash area as well. Try not to obstruct views from cameras and coaches and, you know, offensive and defensive coordinators, those aspects. Also providing a sense of security, so that, you know, when the Burger Bash area is, is not being used, it's not just fully accessible to the public. It would be gated off, so that you could open and, and close it, control it that way. And then that front plaza area that's right into the, the, kind of the main spectator game day experience. So, right when you walk through those set of doors, you would be in that main concourse area. You could go up the stairs to the upper concourse, you could get a hamburger, hot dog, and then, you know, move on into, watch your, watch your player, your route on your team. One of the aspects too, that we've talked a lot about is that the fact that we do have two high schools that are utilizing this facility. And so, this from Morrissey Engineering is the ability to use, you know, simple color changing LED lights, so that we can brand the facility depending on which high school's playing at that point. So, it's a, it's a pretty simple way to, to make the facility universal, but then when, you know, SCOTUS or Columbus High are playing, they can, you know, change the colors. And now it becomes specific to the team that's playing there. And that would also be true of, you know, the media, the digital displays that are throughout, so that you could really make it feel like it's their home stadium and not your, like you're just playing anywhere. So, that's all built into the design. That would also be true, like, once you come in, the front doors, like, this is that main spectator area that I was talking about, you know, concessions off to the right. If you keep going forward, that's the digital display or, or exhibit area. So, whether that's, again, trophies or, you know, the uniform that you're, the team's wearing that day, whatever it may be, right? But it really becomes a focal point, tells you that, could tell you the history of the teams, and then you would go out to the, to the stadium from there. This also gives you the opportunity to think about the ways that you can brand this interior environment as well. So, the ceiling could have, you know, a, a color changing light effect as well, or it can just, and it's a little hard to see, but in the upper left, that's just normal white light, just a soft glow, but then you can change it to, you know, the school team colors, again, just to brand it, wayfinding and, and those aspects. Kind of same perspective, but now we're looking more toward the booster area where it says game day gear. And so, you know, that kind of ceiling aspect that's bringing you into the space, creating this as being a, a live environment, you know, trying to hype up the game day experience. Elevator and the stairs that would take you up to the concourse level there. Again, with the ability to have the color changing lighting as well. Okay? Any questions so far? Okay. So, what we've done is, we've kind of given a, a cost range attached to each phase of the project, and visually you'll be able to see that. So, again, this would be the existing facility as it, as it sits now. That Burger Bash area, which is, you know, a covered concrete pavilion, is about 700 to 850,000 dollars. Again, that gives us the ability to, you know, right size the project based on the, the funding available. But it's also a piece that can be built and, you know, stand on its own as other pieces of the funding are being in, put in place. And then we would look at phase two, which would be the site improvements. Again, we're looking at about 140 cars, a lot of new road and access points, utilities, sidewalks, improving the, you know, the pedestrian circulation, so that nobody's, you know, in conflict with vehicles, all of that. So, we're, we're looking at, you know, about three and a half to 4.25 million for all of what you see up there. That minus the Burger Bash, obviously, that's its own, its own element that's being built upon in this cost estimate. obviously, that's its own, um, its own element that's being built upon in this cost estimate. And then, uh, finally, when we get to, uh, renovating the stadium, putting on that addition, the upper concourse level, the, um, second floor where the coaches are at, and the media, and then the crow's nest, that's, um, eight and a half to ten million, um, as well. So again, that could be built independent of, uh, the Burger Bash, um, and for the most part, independent of the, the stadium, or sorry, the site improvements. Again, there would probably be some site improvements that would need to be done in order to make this work, but for the most part, uh, these can be, uh, distinct. And then finally, you're looking at about a million dollars to put that canopy on, which would be the roof structure and the, um, extending the, the columns in order to make that work. So. All said, you can see here in, uh, the phasing, um, one through four, uh, the costs of those, and then the total build-out of being, you know, three point seven to sixteen point three five million. That does include some escalation in it, you know, in terms of, you know, if you're, you know, a year or two out from being able to build this, but, um, that's probably about the, the limit of that. So if it's moving beyond, you know, into twenty twenty-seven, um, you know, you're, we would need to start to escalate that. And this is pure, you know, hard cost for construction. So this wouldn't be like, you know, design fees, this wouldn't be, um, you know, furniture fixtures and equipment, those aspects. Um, it's, that's purely, uh, what you would get for the building. So that's how much it would cost. Okay? So really, the next steps, as I said before, um, is just, uh, putting a bow on this, you know, making sure that, um, you know, Betsy and Rick and, and Braden are comfortable with what, uh, we've proposed to date. Um, we've got the drawings complete, you know, the estimate is, um, complete as well. So it's just about, um, you know, responding to any last-minute items, putting a bow on it and then turning it over and, um, you know, assisting the city in whatever means they need in order to, uh, make this So. Can I answer any questions? Um, enough for a football team?
Well, what's there now is big enough for a football team, and I, it's not big enough.
Yeah, that we've, we've been able to expand them. So by taking some of the spectator spaces that are there, putting them into the new addition, being able to expand the current footprint of the locker rooms into larger locker rooms. Um, I don't know, Cynthia, do you remember exactly the square footage of them?
No, I can pull it up.
Yeah.
Just to give you context, Ron, it takes where the current bathrooms are right now, it goes into those spaces as well as some of the concession area.
So in other words, it goes out underneath the stadium itself?
Yep, it takes all of that.
Where the, where the, where the hall is or the walkway is, is going to be part of the locker room?
It's all that, all the way to the end on each side.
So, when we say that, when I'm talking about the locker room, I mean, it's, it's this entire area now, you know, where you have, uh, basically each area in blue is, you know, a locker room. And within that locker room, you have the actual lockers of the locker room, and then you have showers, bathrooms, an athletic trainer, coaches' office and storage. So.
I'm assuming all the plumbing and everything is included in this, uh, eight point five to ten million?
That's correct.
Cause you were talking about furnishings and stuff, that would be above and beyond.
Yeah.
Lockers, everything?
Yep, the lockers are, cause they're bolted in.
All part of that.
Correct. It'd be any loose furniture, any, you know, concessions, equipment, those types of things.
Is, okay.
Is additional.
Mark, can I talk about the facilities that they have?
Yeah. So I, um, I hinted on that a little bit. Um, are you talking about how we're able to open them to the out, yeah. So you can, uh, if you can see where my cursor is moving back and forth here, that's an overhead, uh, door, as well as right here. So, we're able to close those, and now you have, you know, this bank of restrooms here, that's a directly accessible to the exterior. And, um, could be, you know, moderately heated so that, you know, no pipes are freezing in the winter, if you're able, if you're wanting to have it open in the winter. That's true of, uh, the locker room over here as well, or, sorry, the restrooms over here as well. But then, you know, when you have, you know, a full, uh, stadium for game day event, uh, you just leave those overhead doors up, and now you have the necessary code required, um, plumbing fixtures accessible, uh, for that, that event. It also gives us
Can we sneak in?
The ability to lock off the, um, the rest of the facility so that, you know, if you are using these smaller restrooms, I'll call them, you don't have free rein to this large locker room or, you know, sneaking out and getting into the rest of the facility, right? It's all, it's all controlled. That highlight would, yeah.
So in a perfect world, we'd, we'd say yes, and we'd do this next year, you know? Obviously, we don't live in a perfect world. So, are you comfortable with the scheming and the staging that you've put this together? So when you do A, you're, it stands alone and it's okay, and you could, and maybe you don't, you know, maybe you don't do A, B, and C, maybe you do A and C. I'm just asking it, you know, is it, are, are you comfortable that it can be staged? Cause quite honestly, that's what's gonna happen. It's not, it's not gonna happen as a package. Um, so we need to look at the, 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 the ability to stage it and be comfortable that what you're putting in front of us doesn't change drastically over time, because a lot of times staging things don't always work the same way that package was gonna work.
Right. And I would say, yes, we're comfortable with that, and I would, uh, the reason I can say that with confidence is because, um, you know, uh, Betsy and the team came with that, um, directive from the very beginning. So we're not backing into, um, this phasing strategy. Uh, the design is predicated on knowing that we're gonna have to phase it in order to, um, to meet the necessary funding that will be out there, so.
So that second level area that you kind of talked about, uh, standing room only right now, talked about the potential for additional seating in the future, is that gonna be structurally, structurally sound to add-on, or would there have to be changes made?
Yeah, no, that, that could accept, um, aluminum bleacher seating, um, you know, should that be optioned? Yeah.
Uh, come on, uh, lockers are sixteen hundred square feet each.
Total.
That does not include, that, that's just player space and, and restaurants, not all the storage and, uh, coaches offices that we've included as well.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Thanks.
You've talked about the current existing facility having issues with weather and, what do you, what would you project the lifespan, uh, wh- wh- I mean, could we wait two years? Could we wait a year? Um, what, what, what's an opinion?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're already at the point, right, Rick, where, where it's, it's, we're band-aiding it to keep it along. So I would say we're, we're at that point.
Okay.
But, uh, you can continue to band-aid it as needed, but.
I heard the word that.
Would want to, we could start with a ten million dollar package to start with, if we wanted to, right?
Correct.
Instead of the, instead of the, uh, Burger Bash area.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have an estimated cost of what the Band-Aids are running annually?
We're spending several thousand just on like piping and plumbing and, um, and everything annually. I'd have to go back in the budget to tell you exactly, but it's several thousand in building repairs that we spend on it.
Construction timeline, would you have an idea if we, for, if we chose like three, what, what would it take us? A year, year and a half?
Yeah, you're, we're probably looking at about twelve to fourteen months for the construction of the stadium aspect of it, yeah. You know, and that's something we would wanna look closely at too with your event schedule?
Mm-hmm.
And how that works.
We did talk about how we could maybe, um, phase that to keep the, you know, temporary, like, restroom facilities or something that need to be done, so, um, the teams wouldn't have to play away schedules the entire year. So, we didn't get into that, that's not really a part of this scope right here, but we did talk about that, that that's how we could try to get that done. It's, so everybody could play a little bit.
For your, with football season, basically.
To eliminate the track time, you could, you know, start at the end of the football season and then run it through the year. So you'd be pretty close to being
Yeah.
Having so that would be, you could walk through it at least.
Yeah, and there, there's other efficiencies that we can look at with, you know, ordering items in advance, having them sitting there ready to go, so that when they get to that point of installation or fabrication, you're not waiting, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you get more buying power at that point too, and, and it just helps move the, the schedule along.
Also, I just want to note for the phasing side of it, the new section of the state, of the stadium goes into what would be currently the road. So if we did do the stadium first, we would have to, um, you know, just figure out the road and parking lot situation if we did do that first.
Yeah.
And this concept doesn't have any, uh, add-on, everything that's getting, cause I, I think there's a, myself personally, and I don't know about anybody else, some disappointment in money that was spent twenty-some years ago that really didn't hold up, like I thought probably should've. Um, what we're seeing with some of the issues that we're having there, uh, it's disappointing.
Yeah.
I guess I'll, I'll just say that. It's, it's disappointing.
They built a Band-Aid, that's what they did.
And, yeah, and so, I mean, you know, and, and maybe that's all that could have been done. I'm not, I'm not ready, I'm not pouncing on anybody, I'm just saying it's disappointing. Um, you know, so I'm not building a Band-Aid again, but coming up with something basically new makes sense.
Yeah.
During the, during the community involvement phase, was there a long-term commitment on these schools? I see it as to continue the university for as many of them as possible. Because I know, like, CHS has been making improvements to their, to field up there. I would just hate for
Oh, yeah.
To not have that conversation.
Yeah. Yeah, um, so CHS does make and, has been making improvements and stuff up there. The issue that they run into for running more than JV events up at their high school is that they don't have restroom facilities close and onsite. So right now, to use the restroom, you have to go all the way over to the high school. So they do foresee themselves using it for varsity events. And for SCOTUS, we're basically, uh, they don't have any, anywhere else to go, so.
I would agree, it would be necessary to get a commitment from both, both, both schools before anything was done.
Yes.
You know, um, yeah. And I know during the public input section, I know a lot of the, the Columbus Pe- Columbus High people were here, I, I think there were s- a few SCOTUS people. So I think they've had input into where we are so far today. Uh, as far as moving forward from here, we'd have to have further discussions, but.
What would be the, the finance procedure for something like this? Tara?
That's the thirteen million dollars.
That's a question, yeah. I thought maybe we had a magic wand or something out there.
Um, you know, there, there are options that we can talk about as we approach next fiscal year, depending on the council's, you know, urgency to want to address this. Um, but we also have other financial, um, commitments we've made, and our one percent sales tax that funds all capital improvement is expiring in twenty twenty-eight. So we'll have to go back to the voters for that as well. So to add this in and any other votes, we'll just have to really talk through those complexities and what our priorities are, and like we always do. I think there are some alternatives, but no, we do not have thirteen, fourteen million dollars laying around over the next couple of years.
No, I, I realize that, I just wondered if there was maybe some, some procedure that we could, you do, or?
There's some options we can talk about.
Good. That can be in this next year's budget type thing when we start discussing procedures and how we want to do this.
Okay, any further questions? Well, I, uh, thank you and your company for, uh, what looks like to be an outstanding, um, plan. It just, now we gotta find sixteen million dollars to, to let it go. But, uh, we do appreciate your time and efforts, and, uh, hopefully you'll be able to see this, and hopefully all of us will at some point. Um, anything else? If not, then I guess we're adjourned. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Safe travels, Merry Christmas.
Yeah.